Okay, today is Tuesday, April 13th. This is the committee of the whole meeting. Actually, this committee of the whole meeting, we've been waiting quite some time to have. And that's because the next two meetings tonight and two weeks from tonight, where we talk about two long-term projects that will set this village up probably for perpetuity as far as maintenance, upkeep, modernization, and needs for roadways, sidewalks, and drainage issues. So tonight, we're going to focus on the roadway aspect. And the interesting part about the roadway aspect is every square inch of every road in Elk Grove Village in our jurisdiction, that's not state or county, has been looked at, analyzed, studied, evaluated. And tonight, we're going to get a game plan that's going to tell us how we're going to keep these roads on tip-top shape, serving the needs of this community for the next 50 years and beyond. It's not just a 2025 plan, it's a 30-35 plan, 40-45 plans, only Georgia, around Methuselah, if you don't want to enjoy it, but the rest of us. So we're excited about this. Again, tonight is to get a presentation. I know we got materials, and as one trustee said, it's kind of confusing, which it is, that's what we had in the presentation. So with that, I'm going to let Mr. Romo introduce all the participants tonight, and we'll go ahead and get started.
Well, I was going to have instructor Kobe Vashin, who's worked very closely with the team.
Please, yeah, come up to the mic? Okay. Thank you, Kobe.
If you want to write them down. So, as the mayor said tonight, we're really excited to bring forth the beginning of what's going to be the capital improvements plan going forward. Tonight, we have representatives from Engineering Enterprises here. They're the consultant that we picked to help us out with this project. We started this in 2019, yeah, 2019. So this is the culmination of, I wouldn't say we've been working on it nonstop for a year and a half, but we've been working on it quite a bit. We have, just starting in the back, we've got Chris Ott. He's one of the engineers who was working on the project. We've got Jeff Freeman here. Jeff is the, excuse me, he's the CEO of Engineering Enterprises. I've worked with Jeff for 12-plus years. And we've got Tim. He's going to tell you everything you need to know about our street project. So I'll let him introduce himself.
Interesting. Thank you, Kobe. It's an honor to be here tonight to talk about the village's pavement management program. A pavement management program is all about helping the village get the most bang for your buck when it comes to paving your streets. Okay? That's what it's all about, is maximizing your investment in your paved streets. So that's what we're going to talk about today. And we're going to, the presentation is in three different sections. We'll start with some background material on the roadway network. We'll talk about some historical data that we've looked at, as well as the results from the village-wide 2019 survey that the mayor referred to. Then we'll talk about the maintenance strategies, some of which are already being implemented. And we'll talk about how those strategies can be optimized, how we used a computer program to optimize them, to find out exactly the best way to maximize your dollar. And then that will lead us to recommendations. And those recommendations will focus on a five-year program going forward from here, as well as continued funding to support this program beyond that five years. This slide shows a map of the village's roads. It's color-coded based on ownership and maintenance responsibilities. The village's responsibilities are the roads shown in red and green. The red streets are local, in the residential portions of town, and the green are the BLF, or the Business Leadership Forum, streets which are in the industrial part of town. And you notice there's quite a bit of difference in those streets. There's also a difference in terms of the width of the streets. And so when we're talking about centerline roads, centerline miles of a BLF versus a local street, it's not a one-to-one comparison. Okay? The surface area is what we're going to be resurfacing with the pavement. Okay? So a wider street requires more surface area, more pavement than a narrower street. So the BLF streets are going to cost more per dollar because they're wider streets. Okay? So although we'll talk about miles, it's not exactly a one-to-one. A BLF mile is going to cost more because it's a wider street. So that's what the streets look like in plan view. In cross-section view, here's what a typical residential street looks like. Ninety-eight percent of the streets are asphalt. And what you'll see here in this cross-section is that the street is made up of three different layers: asphalt layer, underlaid by a base, and that underlaid by a sub-base. The asphalt is about four to six inches. Underneath that is another four to six inches of base material, which is aggregate, fine-grained aggregate, that can be compacted to create the foundation for the asphalt to sit on top of. And then underneath that is the sub-base, and that's a little bit coarser material. That's generally what a cross-section looks like in our residential streets. As the mayor mentioned, in 2019, we did a survey of all the village's streets, and this shows some of the equipment that was used. And the results from that survey, a road tester and a surface, a surface road tester, a road surface tester, excuse me, and a subsurface tester were used to determine these three indices. This surface distress index measures the thickness or width of cracks and the density of the cracks, the number of cracks. The roughness index measures the undulations in the road. And the structural index measures the subsurface, the competency of that base and sub-base material. Those three indices are combined to create what's known as a pavement condition index. And it's an index that we rank the street zero to 100, and then we can use these qualitative descriptions for each of the different categories. So 90 to 100 is considered excellent, 80 to 90, very good, and so on. So this is the scale that we'll be using as we talk about the pavement condition. And we'll talk about the overall condition, which uses all three of these indices, and we'll talk about just the surface condition, which uses the first two and not the structural. The surface condition is important because that's what people drive on, right? They're not so concerned about the subsurface, you can't see that. But the engineers, we need to consider that, because that's a long-term aspect of the maintenance program. But the ridership will most likely be concerned about the surface. This is a map which shows the overall condition of the village's streets. And it's, each street is color-coded according to the average PCI, the pavement condition index, for that street. You can see that about 77%, as shown by the pie chart, is good or better. Okay? And you notice there's quite a bit of blue that's shown, and that's this very good, a lot of very good. As we go to look at the surface, you notice that there's a lot of yellow in this one. And as shown on the pie chart, that's the fair here. And so the excellent, very good, and good on the surface condition is about 67%, not quite as good as the overall condition. Notice also that the colors are pretty evenly distributed across the map. So there's no one particular area in the village that's better or worse than another area. We combined those rankings with the historical data that the engineers have, and it's quite good data. It tells us the last year that the street was resurfaced. And we combined that with the pavement condition index in 2019, and then we plotted it on this graph. So for example, this dot right here would be a street that was resurfaced in 2015, and its overall condition right now is a 75. The shaded area shows 80% confidence, and then the average is this red line. And notice it goes from about 85 down to about 65, and really consists of three segments: this straight segment, dipping segment, and then another straight segment. This is typical of a deterioration curve. So this is a description of how the condition deteriorates in pavement over time. Now let's look at the same type of curve for the surface only. This curve goes from about 95 to 60. So that's a 35 points versus the other one was only 20 points. And the reason is, is because the life cycle of pavement is about 15 to 20 years. So over this 15 years shown here, it goes from excellent to fair or poor. The subsurface has about an 80-year life cycle. Okay? And we'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. So to give you an idea of exactly what we're talking about, when we're talking about these different ranks, we wanted to go through a series of photographs that show the pavement condition for particular streets. So this is Carlswell. I know it doesn't show up very good. Hopefully, it showed up better on your prints, but it's very nice. Was paved over the last year, very smooth surface. In fact, it's black because it hasn't suffered from the ultraviolet radiation, which tends to bleach some of the asphaltic compounds. Carlswell Avenue, it's ranked 92, excellent. Next one is Vulkamer, very good, 86. A little bit of cracking along the edges here, and there is a little bit of a centerline crack here, although you can't see it very well. But in this one of Ridgewood Road, where the ranking was a good at 76, you see that centerline crack becoming pretty prominent. There is some cracking on the edge, and even in the drive, in the drive path, but this is definitely the predominant crack, is that centerline crack. Even when, even in a good street, that crack is there. Okay? If you allow it to go to fair without resurfacing, that crack develops even greater. You see there, now there's multiple cracks, and some that are very thick, very wide. And even in the pathway, now there's some cracking along the edges. And it gets worse as we go. Poor is shown here at a 49, and then a very poor here. And you see, there's even some patching been done on this street. So that gives you an idea of what we're talking about on that scale of 90-plus down to 50. Now, it's not only the surface, but the subsurface that's being affected as the pavement deteriorates. And here's a sequence of slide which helps illustrate that. We said before on Carlswell that the excellent condition, and this represents a surface that was resurfaced within three years, it looks really good, but there's actually a weakness, there's a weak point in that asphalt because of the way the asphalt is laid down. The machines can only do half of the entire width of the street. So there's a match point at that centerline. Okay? And that centerline is that right here. It's not seen, it's not a crack yet, but there is a point of weakness there. And now, as we look at the continued deterioration of the street, in the four to seven years, we see that centerline crack is beginning to form, and this is what it looks like in cross-section. Okay? So there's a small crack. Now that crack allows moisture to get into it. It freezes in the winter, and expands, and causes that crack to get better, bigger, and then thalls. And the freeze and thaw causes that crack to open up. And that crack not only opens up that we can see on the surface, but it also gets deeper into the asphalt. And if we let that go too far, that crack will actually reach down to that base material. And that's when we'll have a base deterioration, and no matter how much resurfacing you do, you won't repair that, because the problem is in the base. Right? So that's the cycle of pavement. So let's talk a little bit about strategies to help extend the life of our pavement. We'll begin by looking at a typical street life cycle. This is a graph that shows the overall pavement condition versus a number of years. And notice it's 80 years out here. That's that base life cycle. So what we see is that when a surface is newly developed, it is very high in its condition, and it deteriorates down. Now, if that crack, if the cracks that are in that asphalt are allowed to continue, the moisture will get down into the base layer. And even when you resurface it, you won't get the same condition because the base layer has been compromised. So even though on the surface it looks really good, because you let it go too far into the poor condition, the base layer has been degraded. And so each time you resurface, it's a little bit further down, okay? Both in the base and in the recovery by the resurfacing. And we say that this is base deterioration accumulating over time. And each time we resurface, the cycle in which we need to resurface again is shorter because that deterioration happens quicker, because the base that it's on top of is compromised. It's like painting rotten wood. Every time you paint it, it looks good for a while, but then it quickly deteriorates. The next step in this life cycle is to reconstruct the street. And that costs about four to five times more than resurfacing. So when we're talking about the effectiveness of a pavement management program, we're talking about avoiding reconstruction. And so let's look at this part of the curve in a little bit more detail to see how we could maybe affect this deterioration curve. Bring it up a little bit and flatten it out a little bit, so we can get better results and a longer life. So here's that same curve. The X-scale is a little bit wider, so it looks a little flatter. But this is our original deterioration curve. Now what we're going to do is apply some maintenance strategies and see what it does to this curve. The first one that we'll apply is heavy patching and curb work. So when we resurface our pavement, we grind off the old pavement. And when we have that grinded off, we have an opportunity to be pretty close to the base. So we can do patching of that base material. And we typically know that we need to do that because we do corrings before the resurfacing. So that's part of this strategy, is to do heavy patching to improve that base layer when it's needed. And also to do curb work. Curb work is very important, because it's moisture that's causing accelerated deterioration of our pavement. And when those curbs don't move that water off the street, that street is going to suffer because of it. So heavy patching and curb work is one of the strategies. And when we implement that strategy, that deterioration line will move up, because we're improving the base. The second strategy is to use Reclamite, which is an asphalt rejuvenator. It improves the flexibility and extends the life. And so that's what's shown on this curve, is an extension of the life in terms of being better, a higher condition over a longer period of time. And then the third strategy is to do crack sealing. Again, putting the asphalt sealer in that midline crack, so that crack does not develop, and it protects the base layer that we just spent the heavy patching on. So in total, these three strategies applied will create a new deterioration curve. And that new deterioration curve will help extend the useful life of the pavement. Here's that original life cycle of the street, and we'll put on top of that the life cycle of the street with the maintenance strategies applied. And you can see the difference. We have extended useful life, and we have longer periods of time where the road is in the good and very good and even excellent, and the base deterioration is much less, and we have less time in the fair and poor categories. Okay? So applying these maintenance strategies will help extend the life, the useful life of our pavement. In terms of implementation, the crack sealing should be done every five to, or five to seven years after resurfacing, at the onset of that centerline crack. And notice this picture only has one crack seal. It's in the centerline, kind of shown in a blow-up there. We focus on that centerline. Crack sealing is not meant to be done at year 10, where you have cracks all over the surface. It's done early to prevent that centerline crack. Reclamite, which you're probably familiar with, we've been using it here for a few years now, and it is applied the first year after resurfacing. And then that heavy patching, which I described, getting down to that base layer and doing your repairs, so that you have a good competent base, a foundation for that pavement. So when we apply these strategies, we would expect some particular outcomes. One is that it's really a continuation of what we've been doing. Two, that the streets will be resurfaced now before they reach poor condition. And this will increase the satisfaction of our residents. Fewer poor streets, more, higher level of satisfaction. We will extend the useful life of the pavement, and that will improve the overall condition. The marginal increase in cost of that maintenance program is about 5% on what we're already doing, but it will extend the life cycle of that pavement by about 25%. So that's some of your best money spent, is on top of your resurfacing this preventative maintenance program. Okay? So let's look at when and where we need to apply those maintenance strategies. This graph shows what we've come up with for the ideal level of service. That's going to be our target. If we could achieve this distribution of condition in all of our streets, we would be happy. Having 15% excellent, 50% very good, and 20% good, so on. That would minimize the poor, only 2%. That would give us 85% in the good plus, which would result in a high level of satisfaction, and we would have 15% in the excellent category to do that preventative maintenance on, the Reclamite and the crack sealing. So this is our target. So let's look at how we stack up against that target now. This is the local streets, and the bars with the horizontal lines represent the percentages in each category of the local streets, and we're comparing it to that ideal. And what you see is that we have less than ideal in terms of excellent streets, and we have more than ideal in the fair and poor. Okay? That's the local. Now when we look at BLF, we see a similar, although a greater disparity between existing and ideal. Primarily in the very good category, where there's a 16 miles of difference, and in the fair and poor. So the idea of the program is to move these poor and fair into the good and very good and excellent category, similar to what we target. Okay? So that's a little bit about where we are and what our targets are. How much have we spent to get to this point? So this is a graph that shows, is a summary of the spending over the last several years. It shows the annual resurfacing expenditures from zero to four and a half million on this left-hand side, and corresponds to the bars. The bars are shown in different colors for the different funds, the MFT, the BLF, and the general funds. Notice in 2019, 18, 19, and 20, in particular in 19, we spent a lot of general fund money to get that total expenditure up. And over here are the number of centerline miles that we did every year, zero to nine. So for example, in the period '06 to '13, we spent a million dollars, did about five miles, which is an average of $200,000 per mile. Notice that the per-mile costs are going up significantly because of the asphalt cost, because we're doing a little bit thicker overlay now, we're doing curb and gutter and sidewalk. That restorative maintenance is in here, as well as the preventative maintenance. And so all these factors are leading to a higher per-dollar cost. Right now, we're on the schedule of doing every street once every 15 to 16 years. So if we continued spending about what we're doing now, we would be in the 15 to 16 years. The street that we just repaved would come back around in 15 to 16 years for the entire village. That's what we mean by that. Okay? So we've looked at our maintenance strategies, we've looked at the disparity between where we want to be and where we are, the funding that has gotten us to this point. Now, we need to optimize our program going forward. And we received a software package along with the pavement condition analysis by the vendor, and that software package can run various scenarios of applying these management strategies. And that's what we've done. And that's what we've done. We've taken five different scenarios. And the first four are based on cycles, yearly cycles of resurfacing. So I just said we're in the 15 to 16 years now. We ran one at 12 years, 15 years, 17 years, and 20 years. And then the current level of spending, which is one and a half million for local and one for BLF. We looked at those and we tried to determine which one best fit our ideal, our target that we were established. And then based on that, we developed a multi-year plan and a prioritization scheme. And we'll show that now. So this is a graph which shows percentage of total and the qualitative PCI score. So remember, our target was 15, 50, 20, 13, and 2%. And what we're showing is the current level, our percentage in each one with this same signal, same horizontal lines that we showed before. And then on top of that, we show the different, the results from the different scenarios. Where the darker scenario represents the more frequent repaving cycle. So the A1 or the darkest is 12 years, 15 years, 17 years, and 20 years. So if we were to apply the strategy in every 12 years, in five years, we would have almost 67% of our streets would be in very good condition. That's what this, that's what this is telling us, okay? So these are the different results. These scores up here are the correlation of each of those results with the ideal, with the target. And so what you see is that the, the best correlation is the second one where we're doing every street in every 15 years. Okay? That's the highest number. We go to 12 years, that's a little bit more than what we need. We're in 17 years, that's not quite as much. It's not quite as good. So what, where we want to be is a cycle of about once every 15 years. Now, the BLF is not quite as good and we don't ever get to the optimal. But we believe that 15-year cycle for BLF is a good starting point. Okay? Whereas the other one, we, we maximized at 15. This one, we're not quite maximizing. And the reason is, is because currently we have so many fair and, and poor streets in the BLF. But over time, we will get there. So out of that comes our recommendations. This is a summary table that shows the cost per year for the different scenarios on the local and BLF streets. In the far right-hand column is the average expenditure on a year-to-year basis. And the best correlation on the local streets is the once every 15 years. Applying that same cycle to BLF, we come up with a 2.94 annual for local and 1.78 annual for BLF, or a total of about $4.7 million. Okay? So that's what's going to get us close to our target for local in five years and move us in the right direction for BLF in that five years. Here's what the next five years would look like with spending that 4.7 or so every year. These are color-coded by year that they'll be resurfaced. And notice they're spread out across the village, but grouped together to get an economy of scale. When we have streets that we're doing that are close to one another, we get a better price from the contractor. So it's not necessarily worst first. It also considers the geography of the street because we want to group these streets to get that better pricing. So this is the five-year plan of the 4.7 million annual expenditure for this five years and then beyond. Here's our, here's the details with each line item. And you can see the number of miles that we're doing, the individual numbers for resurfacing versus preventative maintenance for both local and BLF, and then the total cost. And you notice they're not right on 4.72 exactly because some, some street combinations will be a little bit more, some will be a little bit less based on the exact number of miles. But in average, it's about that 4.7, 4.8 number again, with a total expenditure over the five years of just under 24 million. So now let's go back to that graph, that historical graph that we showed, historical expenditures. And let's put that next five years, our recommendation on top of it. And that's what's shown here. So you can see with some of the additional funding that we've had over the last several years, we've been in the 3 million or so range. We'd like to be up in that four and a half, 4.7 range in order to get closer to meeting our goal. And this program will include curb and gutter on a consistent basis, doing Reclamite, crack sealing, and heavy patching. So that's more than just resurfacing. We're doing a lot more, including the heavy patching to help protect the base. So our recommendations, allocate that 4.7, 4.8 million dollars a year, as Mayor said, in perpetuity. The next five years, implement that plan that you see here. Update that plan every year because circumstances change. And then every five years, redo this analysis and update the five-year plan. So with that, thank you for your time, Mayor.
Well, hang on before we get to questions. So basically what we're looking at, right now, we get about a million dollars a year in MFT funds. That's from the state. So that docks it down from 4.8 down to 3.8. What we've done the last two years, two and a half years to accelerate, to get this plan kind of semi-going, we did the Reclamite and the other work. We haven't done the sealing yet and all that, but the crack sealing. But to get going, we, one year, we took quite a bit out of our reserves. And we've been taking quite a bit out of BLF, which we can't keep doing because BLF is using so many other ways than just roadwork. You know, we're doing all our drainage work out there in the industrial park and other work with it. So basically what we'll do, I'll be coming back with in May, is a plan to help gap some of that funding. We'll use some BLF money, but we'll also have other source of funding to do it. But by doing this plan, that will put us on a game plan to take care of our roads, basically for perpetuity. Every five, it'll be a rolling five-year plan. Now, each year, it'll be reevaluated because something may have changed to change a street we were planning on in '23. We may do '24 and move the '24 street to '23. You know, we got to be firm or flexible on that. But every five years, they will come back out. So in 19, they did it. So in 2024, they'll come out again and analyze all of our streets once again. We look at, the good news we found to this point so far, not 100%, but probably 99%. We do not have as much positonic-based streets as we had feared. That's great news. Because positonic basis was our fear of ultimate catastrophe as far as fixing streets. So right now, we don't think we have anywhere near as much as we thought. That's going to help us. But this plan here, you see the detail they went into and all that. And the reason they did their study in 19, we were hoping to do this in 20. But with the pandemic, we put everything on hold for a while to see where we came out of the pandemic, how we're doing financially and all the rest. Now that we're coming out, it's time to take off. But if you noticed during the pandemic, we did start doing some of the aspects of this plan. Not all of it, but some of it. And that's why we're starting to get work on this. But so our game plan is this, this is our first phase, the roadwork. Next, in two weeks, we'll be doing drainage and sidewalks. And then on the 11th, we wrap everything up and we're setting it up. And this is important. You know, like we always say, a house is only as good as its foundation. A community is only as good as its foundation. We've been working very hard for years now. We line our sewer lines, taking care of water mains. We're getting all those done. This is the last part of our foundation, which is roads, sidewalks, and drainage. We worked hard on drainage in the industrial park, done a lot. Now we got, we're going to start focusing on the residential side. So this is the first aspect. So outside the funding part, we'll work on that in the future. Any questions on what they're talking about, on what they want to do on a rolling plan for roads? Because every single street in Elk Grove, industrial park, residential, is rated right now. So if you live on Pinrich, we can tell you what you're rated. If you live over, or you work on Estes, we can tell you what you're rated. We know that now. We'll update as time goes on, but we know that. And we're going to work on that. Not always worst first, depending on finances, how we do it. But the worst streets will be higher priority as time goes on. Questions?
Just related to that, because one of the things you said was because of economics, you would do areas contiguous.
Yes.
Are the conditions of those, of all those roadways, they would all be in the same condition, would they?
That's correct. And so that's why we say it's not necessarily worst first. So if you did the worst first, you would have a patchwork.
Right.
And when you bid that, the contractor would have to inflate his prices because one week he's working over here, the next week he's working over there, the next week he's working back here. If we look at it overall and say, here's a neighborhood where a lot of the streets are in poor or fair condition. And if we group these together, we can get an economy. That's how we've done that.
And then supposedly that neighborhood would stay at the same level for the next time around, right? The wear and tear on the streets.
Yes, yes, yes. That's exactly right. And that's, and that's part of.
And eventually become a rolling plan. So in 15 years, that section go again. And this section will go again. And comes, it takes time to get to that level and stuff. Maybe we should have done this 15, 20 years ago, but things, technologies come a lot longer, further along over the past 15 years, you probably couldn't have done it. But the big thing we're doing is Reclamite. That's why we've been doing that so much on our new roads because that's going to give extended life by far to help us do even better life expectancy and condition. Because exactly what you're saying, residents have no clue about the base. All they do is look out the window and they see the road. Wow, there's a lot of cracks in that road. That's what they see. That doesn't mean the base is bad. It just means we got to do some work to, the base is still good. We want to do some work to preserve that base to stay good for the future and the road will look better for longer. But the bottom line is this, the sun's going to make a nice-looking road like that last a year or two. And no matter what, it could be a great surface, great everything, but it's going to be great. It just, that happens. It's like your driveway, you seal coat your driveway. It helps preserve the life of the asphalt driveway, but more importantly, it looks nice. That's why people seal coat every year. They really don't have to, but they want it to look nice. So it'll look faded. So same thing on this work here.
Yes. And the Reclamite, the asphalt rejuvenator that's added at the, the year after it's resurfaced really helps withstand that ultraviolet and gives that asphalt flexibility so it, it lasts longer without cracking.
Okay. Other questions?
All right, just one more.
Chris, go ahead.
The only, the only other one, this does not interfere with spot, spot situations, does it? For example, like if some, a resident calls in, their street's not scheduled to be redone, but they have some potholes in there, we still do spot.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll still go out and fix an edge or repair an area, absolutely.
Now, understand this, our biggest problem, where people see most of the problem, and that's why he said curb is so important, is along the curbing.
Yes.
You know what the problem there is? Waste management. There are garbage trucks with the weight, where so much each week going down those streets, along the edges. That, you know, most of our streets don't have trucks that big ever driving on it, except every garbage day. And that's why you see so much wear and tear. That's why, like he said, getting, making sure those curbs are working efficiently, flowing the water the way it should be, extends that life immensely. So that's why we have to put a heavy toll on checking the curves, gutters, when we're doing the work on the street. Because that will extend the life a lot longer. Because most people look at, it's more aesthetics that they see. But the solid part of the road might be great. It just looks cracked up, which happens. That's why we work on the cracks and all that. But yeah, most of the reason people have those.
That makes sense.
Waste management, the trucks, there's no way we can get around it. You got to have garbage taken up. So, you know, that's why it happens. Anything else? You fine? Pat, did you have anything?
Uh, just comment, maybe if it gets through Congress, the Biden plan for infrastructure improvement, maybe we'll get some money out of that. That would be wonderful.
Not for this.
Not for that?
This is a maintenance program forever. The Biden money, we got to rebuild Tawnee Road.
Okay.
We're already talking to Congressman Raja. We're looking for money to help us on that project. We got a big project going on Meachaw. We're looking for money from Doug and Congressman Raja about that. Those are for one-time projects. That's why people say, you know, and I've been saying this for seven months now, we've done great. We haven't raised our general property tax revenue for 14 years. That's phenomenal. It can't go on forever. We got to find some funding to put this plan in place for perpetuity. Money we have coming in excess above, we can do well in years, that money goes for one-time projects. We can't count on that money coming in every year. So we got to set up, and unlike the federal government and state government, we find sources of money to pay our bills. We don't just spend and say, well, we'll print more or we'll hopefully get something down the road. That's what we have to set up. This is a perpetuity plan we're putting in place. We got to set up a source of funding to take care of it for perpetuity. And that's the right way to run government. So we don't have to worry about, well, we spent all the money on the roads because we had a nice $8 million surplus this year. What do we do next year? We have no surplus. Uh, we can't print money. So we're going to set up to be done continuously. Because it's going to go on forever. It's not going to stop. Anything else?
No.
Nancy, anything?
You mentioned, and I, that was one of my questions, is the 4 million average, but that doesn't take into consideration, you mentioned that that part of our MFT funds would offset that, right?
But yeah, out of the 4.8 million, MFT would take away a million, bring it to 3.8. Some BLF, we might put a half million here, bring it to about 3.3. So we're looking for now 3.3 million a year, new dollars to carry that on for perpetuity.
We wouldn't then be using general funds, which were.
The excess, we've used last year, no. Because you can't do that forever.
No, I know.
And I'd rather do it right. And, you know, I just keep watching the federal government, oh, we're just going to do 2 trillion here, up 2 trillion there, oh, trillion there. Our kids and grandkids, they're, they're screwed, I'm telling you. We do it right. We find a source of funding, we lock it into the project, and it's there for perpetuity. That's the way to do it. Nancy, anything?
In the first thing, the village roadway system, you have FAU. What does that stand for?
Yeah, sorry. That's federally assisted urban. So the federal DOT funnels money through the state. And that's for those larger construction projects like would be a Tawnee or something like that. Where the village participates at a 30% level or so.
They pay 80, we pay 20.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Federal assisted.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Sam, I am.
Well, most of my questions or comments have been covered already, but I, I was wondering about the cost, how far out we can look because of things like, you know, it looks like inflation's about to circle nuts again. We're seeing with gasoline already. And this current president seems to have a bad thing on oil. And I think that's where all this blacktop comes from. I'm just wondering what, if these costs are being.
We are, that, that's our, ours thing, not his. We're building into this recommendation I'm going to make in May. They'll build a, part of the segment of funding will be increasing year to year. It's in there, not raising taxes. The source of revenue drawn upon, we know is going to be going up. One of it's electric money, electric tax money. And we know that's going to be going up. So that is going to help us offset that. Because we thought of the same thing you said, Sam, that's exactly right. So we've already built that into the formula. We got that covered.
And the other thing goes way back to the beginning where you were mentioning that centerline starts cracking. Maybe this would be a engineering nightmare, but has there ever been any thought about building that centerline up a little at the beginning? You know, I mean, creating a little hump or something?
Well, part of our problem is our streets are getting too much like this now. We, we, our streets have become almost like a mountain. We don't want them that high. We got to start getting them more flattened out. So that centerline crack is always going to be there. It's, every town has it, every road has it. Because you can't get asphalt trucks exactly the width of the street. So you're always going to have two areas where the asphalt's going to join, and that's always going to be your weakness.
And there are some experimental methods to deal with that, including putting a, a, a separate layer. And there are some experimental methods to deal with that, including putting a, a, a separate layer down the center to try to prevent that cracking from, from continuing down.
Well, yeah.
But some of those are.
At least keeping water out of there.
Yes, they are experimental, and that's something that the village could very definitely experiment with itself.
As long as we don't get skunk streets.
We're too bad.
Shmitty?
And you have ninety-eight percent of the roads are asphalt and the platform, what about this two percent of the concrete? Will you, how do you deal with that?
Do we have any?
It says two percent of our roads are asphalt.
Uh, yeah, so for the concrete, the concrete streets are actually calculated in here too. Pride is in the program, so we draft the Pride and the President Department. Those are a majority of our streets.
Is concrete, I mean, not is concrete is more expensive than asphalt?
Yeah, yeah, it's, concrete will be a patching program, and if it gets severe enough and the rigibility and the aggravating, kind of like what the county had done on Meacham.
That's what's going to happen on our own.
Yeah, Arden Heights, we're going to address that one with the county, we'll be doing an overlay, so it'll become more like a toyed, a concrete street, raise the gutters, and then we'll do an overlay, so it'll be an asphalt layer surface, so it's easier to maintain. It's going to be, it's a rigibility, it'll be much nicer if they acquired.
I'm just curious, then, if the concrete, when you're in an asphalt, is that due for maintenance? Is that create a, is, is the asphalt going to last longer?
The asphalt, uh, yeah, they'll still have the same base, because the concrete accents the base then.
Right.
Um, and then it'll still be as, as the asphalt wears, and if we don't, as long as we do maintenance responsibilities, you know, the reclamite and everything else, will slow down the deterioration of the asphalt, and then hopefully not allow the water to get to the concrete base. So concrete's deteriorating just like asphalt does, because of cracks, and as the cracks get there, uh, in the early cycles as it goes, it's possible.
But you're probably not going to get more than fifteen years out of it.
Yeah, you're still going to get the same life, asphalt is only.
I remember when he did fifty-three, I don't know how many years ago that was, he put some experimental concrete in, it was supposed to last forty years, and I go on every once in a while, it still looks good. So I guess it's working.
Anything else?
No.
Shmitty, you good? Everyone good? I, Ashley and I, you had to make a decision. Do you, I know, we got to trust Frank with this, do you need them to come back in four weeks when we talk about the finances? Or you pretty well?
Uh, we're comfortable.
Totally, they're going to do a good job.
Yeah.
They, is it easier to have them explain the sheets?
Yeah, except if one wasn't upside down on every other page, that would have been easier to read.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I was glad to get them out to you, but it's really, almost does it a disservice, because you're going to be confused. When they walk through it and they do a nice job explaining.
But the key is that we get a chance to really look at it, especially the grubs. To just see it at this time, it gives us a chance to look at.
So we're good? We'll get, are we comfortable with the project that they're laying out for us?
Yes.
The proposal, the future, how we want to do it for, basically perpetuity. We're good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you, I know you worked a long time, and I know it's, you did a nice, very nice presentation.
Thank you, we enjoyed work for the village, very much so.
And trust me, if we can understand it, then anyone's going to understand it, so you did a great job.
Okay, good.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
With that said, we're going to need, we're thinking about five ten minutes, we'll go upstairs. Get ready for budget hearing, which should only take Ms. Trump about thirty seconds. It's very simple, when you cut your budget, how you take a long time, right? And we get rid of the village attorney, we'll save a lot of money, a real lot. No, she's nodding. Okay, well, during this, we'll meet upstairs at five to seven for the public hearing.